Well, I tell you what, uh, let's get some of the preliminaries done then. This is a virtual meeting being recorded, roll call votes necessary. And we'll, uh, we can start off the reopening the open session at six twelve on November fifteenth, one of select board. So, um, first order of business, is there any, uh, public input? Any hands there, Steve? You're muted.
I was muted. I see none, Gary.
Okay. Well, why don't we go ahead then and, uh, run through the announcements?
So Harriet on, I don't know if she'd like to speak to this.
Harriet, if you'd like to talk about your CPC hearing tomorrow evening?
Uh, yes, we're having our public hearing at six o'clock on Zoom. Uh, I've six thirty, excuse me. Six thirty on Zoom. Thank you for correcting your slide. Uh, I've had several inquiries and I just, want to encourage anybody who has any thoughts, any projects, either current or in the future, please come onto the Zoom and let us know what you're thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Harriet. Back to you then, Steve.
All right, this is, um, so again, this is, uh, reeds across America. It's going to take place on Saturday, December seventeenth, at twelve P M. Uh, this is run by the Veterans Committee here in Wyndham. Uh, this year, five hundred and ten reeds will be placed on, the, the veterans graves buried within the Wyndham semitaries. Uh, so again, it's, uh, Saturday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, you also can sponsor them by, uh, buying additional reeds, fifteen dollar reeds. And, uh, any additional contributions are always welcome to help ensure that all five hundred and ten veterans graves are, or are, are recognized. And this is just, uh, just a reminder of the, uh, bag leaf collection. They're not doing, they, um, in prior years, the leaf collectors have gone around and, you know, essentially just sucked up the leaves off the curb. Folks could just pile the leaves out on the street side and they came around with big vacuum sucking them up. They're not doing that anymore, uh, this year is if they must be bagged in brown paper lawn bags like the, big, uh, grocery store style, uh, paper bags, but much bigger like, you know, Lowe's, Home Depot, Ace Hardware. And those two days are November nineteenth and December tenth. Any questions, you can call the DPW, uh, at the number listed at the bottom of the slide. Or a call select board's office too. We can, we can, uh, direct you or help answer any questions. And, uh, this is again, mattress and textile waste ban went into effect on November first, two thousand twenty-two. Now, in order to dispose of, uh, mattresses, to, um, bring them directly to the DPW garage, uh, currently it's, it's at no charge. Uh, but that may change, uh, next year, but currently we're able to do this at, at no charge through a grant. And yeah, it's at the DPW garage ninety-one Grapevine Road, Wyndham. It's on Tuesdays and Wednesdays from eight A M. to two. Again, any questions, feel free to give us a call. Uh, Sheila, who's kind of organizing the program, in the DPW office as available at the number, number below as well. And, uh, this is just to remind folks that the select board adopted the winter parking ban, last, uh, at the last meeting, two weeks ago. So the parking ban is effect, is, is in effect currently started on November second, two thousand twenty-two. We'll run through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. No vehicles may be parked on the streets for more than an hour from midnight to six A M. This applies all winter, whether there's snow on the ground or not. All right, Gary, should we keep going? Let's see. I'm gonna see if Peter's.
Why don't you keep going then, Steve? We'll get through this.
Um, yeah, so time is up straight. Update, I got a few. So the comp and class study, uh, is moving along. I'm hoping to have, Gov H R and their representatives in at the next select board meeting on December sixth, uh, to present their findings. I would had a meeting today with the school, uh, the superintendent and, uh, many of the finance director, to go over their budget presentation, kind of their first version, similar to ours, that they're going to be presenting to the, um, school committee tonight. So actually, in, in Wyndham's favor, there was a, uh, a shift of the student population that, you know, shifted, uh, some of the assessment burden off of Wyndham and, uh, onto Ha- on Hamilton, um, based on what the student body did. It shrunk on all accounts, but it just shrunk a little bit more on Wyndham's side. Um, attended the Veterans Day celebration on Friday. That was a great turnout. I'm not gonna say too much because I know Gary, will want to add some, but I will second what Gary says. We need better speakers for the speaker, uh, for sure. Yeah. And then, uh, Iron Rail Committee met last and voted unanimously to, to join, to form a joint, uh, committee rail, uh, Iron Rail Committee or Subcommittee that, they will work, uh, in collaboration with town staff and the planning board, to get a, uh, a comprehensive review of the Iron Rail Committee, um, redevelopment plan. So they're on board with that. And we're starting that process out of the planning department, coming up with consultants and, appraisers and things that would be, uh, well suited for this type of project as we, you know, decide whether we need to draft an R F P or where their professional services and exemplify thirty D. We want to move forward with one of those candidates. And that's all I have, uh, till I have for updates today.
Thank you, Steve. So, uh, let me, uh, send out some thank yous first to Leela McDonald and American Legion Post, uh, one ninety-four in Hamilton for, hosting the Veterans Breakfast, which was very good. And, um, then to Dean Peterson, who, uh, spoke eloquently at the, uh, Legion Post, and also organized and led the ceremonies at Cheeseman Field and at the, uh, War Memorial. So, uh, afterwards, uh, during the ceremony, we had a good turnout of, uh, citizens and especially our Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts were there. And thank you to Natalie and Chief Kavanaugh, afterwards for the desserts at, uh, the Forest Station and to the Boy Scout Troop Twenty-eight for the, uh, lunch that they provided. So Diane was there as well, and I think, uh, all those had attended, uh, enjoyed the, uh, lunch. And, uh, must say that, uh, had great weather and it was an excellent ceremony. Anything to add, Diane?
No, it was great all the way around.
Very well, then, um, anything from Peter? Text wise, Steve, or anything?
No, nothing, nothing.
Hmm, all right. Then, um, Diane, any, uh, reports to make?
I don't have anything, no.
Very well, then on to, uh, consent agenda. Uh, you want to make that motion then, Diane?
I'd be happy to move to approve the Wyndham Select Board Open Session meeting minutes from September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, October first, twenty twenty-two, and November first, twenty twenty-two.
Second, any further discussion?
None.
Otherwise, roll call vote, Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes, passes, uh, by the majority. All right, so we're on to, uh, new business. And, uh, so Steve, we have a quorum from the, uh, Board of Assessors with us tonight?
Yes, let me just confirm we did, uh, did earlier. Let me just make sure.
They're turning their volume on.
Tom, okay. I'm the only one present this evening.
All right, so.
I could not make it this late.
All right, then, uh, Tom, uh, representing, but no quorum on the Board of Assessors. But, uh, Steve, if we're ready, let's, uh, proceed with a classification hearing, joint, uh, with, uh, the Slackboard.
Yep. Well, thank you for calling the meeting. We are getting feedback here.
Joe, if you want to pull up the, uh, classification.
Okay. We're just trying to correct it. Can you hear me now?
Yes, excellent.
Diane, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, yep.
Okay. Good evening. The Board of Assessors met earlier this evening and we voted to, um, approve what you are going to hear this evening with the recommendations that will follow. So at this time, uh, I want to just make the comment that first we have a totally new staff. I know Steve Osowski's looking on, but Terry Fontaine is here as the Executive Assistant to the Board. And we have Todd over here in, in the back, who will be doing most of the speaking this evening. And, uh, we have been, they, they have been working extremely hard to put everything together. And I might add with no, this way with, uh, Steve, but this is one of the earliest times that we've made a presentation to the Board, set, uh, Board of Selectmen, or the Select Board, I should say, in many years. Usually we're doing this in December. We're happy to do it this year in November. We have done a lot of things and they have done a lot of things and we are proud of the work that they have done. And we are up to snuff and ready to go. Most of the stuff we have done has been approved by the state. That's why we can have the hearing this evening. And actually, without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Todd Laramie, who has been our new, uh, Board Assessor. He's the Assessor for the Town of Wyndham as well as the Town of Hamilton. And Steve is the Chairman of the Board in Hamilton, and I'm the Chairman of the Board here. Todd, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Tom. Can you folks hear me over there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I have no audio. Um, all right, it's nice to meet everybody. Uh, Tom, thank you for the introduction. It's been, uh, you know, a bit of a thrash here, jumping in when we did, uh, timing was tough to try to get to this point, but, um, Terry Fontaine, who's the Assistant Assessor here, and Wyndham has done a fantastic job to, uh, get us where we needed to be and, uh, just been kind of riding her coattails and, um, and getting us to this classification hearing. So, um, you know, what, what I've done here, I think Terry's done tenfold up to this point. And once we get, uh, a little more organized and once the, uh, start of the new year comes here, we'll get our feet on the ground and get going and we'll, get things to where we need to be. So, um, I'll try to be as quick as possible. There are a couple blurbs I'm going to have on some of these, uh, options here, but just please bear with me. Um, so in accordance with Massachusetts General, Chapter forty, Section fifty-six, the Wyndham Select Board must vote, on four classification options, each of which has the potential to impact Wyndham's fiscal year twenty-three tax rate. Four classification options are, one, the determination of a open space discount, of up to twenty-five percent for all land identified as open space. The determination of a residential exemption of up to thirty-five percent. The determination of a small commercial exemption of up to ten percent. And then, of course, the adoption of a residential factor, for the purpose of determining the percentage of tax burdens borne by each property class. So, option one, open space discount. Uh, the open space discount includes land maintained in an open or natural condition that contributes to benefit and enjoyment of the public. Open space does not include land taxable under a permanent conservation restriction or used to produce income. Uh, Board of Assessors has determined that there are no vacant land parcels here in Wyndham, meeting this criteria, and would provide no taxpayer relief. Uh, therefore, the Board of Assessors does not recommend an open space discount. So I'm not sure if we're going to go by one by one here and vote on these.
But yes, let's, uh, do them as they come up, knowing that the first.
Can I get some volume here?
Yeah. Hear us now?
It's got to be over there.
Can you hear us now, Todd?
Can you hear?
Yeah, I can hear from over there, yeah.
All right, very well. So let's, uh, make these as we go, knowing that the first three are pretty muted anyhow. So Diane, you want to make the first motion here?
I move that the Select Board of Wyndham not adopt an open space discount.
I'll second that. Any, uh, discussion, questions, Diane?
Quick question, yes. Is this the same, is this new or is this the same as every year that there's no open space vacant lots?
Essentially the same, correct, Todd? That we don't have any that qualify?
We didn't hear Gary. Did you approve it?
I had a question. We just made the motion. Tom, can you hear me?
Did you approve, did you accept the first motion we made?
Can you hear us, Tom?
Because of my speech, everyone's speakers, it's feeding back. So I killed my speakers.
Well, Diane, so. Yeah, so, yes, in the past, we have not actually taken this form of vote, but they are, have not been, I expect, and this year are no parcels that actually qualify for this.
Perfect.
So let's roll, let's roll call vote then. Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes, and the, uh, the motion, uh, passes not to adopt a open space discount.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the residential exemption. Uh, the residential, uh, exemption, the average residential valuation for fiscal twenty-three is seven hundred ninety-seven thousand nine eighty-one. The severage includes condos, one family, two families, three families, apartments, miscellaneous residential properties, as well as mixed use and vacant land. Uh, this exemption would allow a reduction in valuation for each qualifying residential parcel of up to thirty-five percent of the average residential value, which in this case would be two hundred seventy-nine thousand two ninety-three. Uh, the net effect of the residential exemption is to lower tax bills for all residential properties valued less than the average valuation, and increase tax bills for all residential properties valued greater than the average. Um, you know, I guess in a nutshell, this, uh, is sort of designed for, uh, communities with properties that have a lot of income-based properties, second homes, that type of thing. And, um, shifting the tax burden to residential properties that are not owner occupied. So, uh, the overwhelming majority of Wyndham residential properties are owner occupied, leaving few, if any, residential properties to shift the burden on. Therefore, the Board of Assessors does not recommend a residential exemption.
So, I move that the Wyndham Board of Selectmen not adopt a residential exemption.
Any questions, Diane?
Again, this is similar to every year. We, the majority of us live in our homes, so there's really no benefit to, to making this one.
Yeah, there's really no one to shift it on to, being that you present. All right, then, roll call, Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes, passes by the majority.
Uh, I'm here.
Pete's here now.
All right, Peter.
Yes.
Okay. Todd, next one?
Uh, small commercial exemption, the determination of a small commercial exemption of up to ten percent of the valuation of eligible parcels. This exemption is designed, is designed to provide a measure of property tax relief to owners of small business properties, not the business owners, by shifting the tax burden to larger commercial industrial properties. Uh, Wyndham lacks the diversity of commercial industrial properties necessary for the effective implement, implementation of this exemption. Therefore, the Board of Assessors does not recommend a small commercial exemption.
Questions, Diane or Peter?
Nope.
Nope. All right. The motion then, Diane?
I move that the Wyndham Select would not adopt a small commercial exemption.
Do I have a second?
Peter, seconds.
All right. Anything further? Otherwise, the roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Next.
Finally, last but not least, the residential factor, uh, residential factor for the purpose of determining the percentage tax burden to be borne by each class of each property of property. Uh, adoption of a factor of one results in a single tax rate for all classes of property. Any other factor would result in a lower residential tax rate and a higher commercial, uh, therefore shifting the tax rate to the commercial, industrial and personal property classes. Um, split tax rates are typically found in, uh, cities with heavy, uh, influence of commercial industrial properties. Uh, and here in Wyndham, there are less than two percent of the total taxable valuation, um, in Wyndham is commercial, industrial and personal property. So the Board of Assessors recommends that the Select Board maintain a single tax rate by voting for residential factor of one.
Questions, Peter? Diane?
No.
No.
All right. The motion then, please, Diane?
I move the Wyndham Select Board adopt a residential factor, uh, one.
Peter Clay, second.
Anything further? Otherwise, uh, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. All right, thank you, Tom and, uh, Terry and, uh, Todd. So, good presentation and, uh, I think we got these realities done, uh, quite early in the year. So thanks.
If I could just, I could just thank you. If I could just thank you, that presentation was very, um, educational and easy to understand. So I thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, nice job.
All right, then, on to, uh, new business B, a one-day liquor license for the Wyndham Museum. Do we have, uh?
I'm looking.
Anybody?
I do not see anyone, uh, on here, but yeah, so the, uh, the, the one-day liquor license is being requested by the Wyndham Museum for the Sleigh Bell Holiday Party on November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, from five to eight. Uh, all their paperwork is been submitted timely and in order, and they're looking for permission from the Select Board, uh, for the licenses.
Questions, Peter or Diane?
I don't.
Nope.
All right. Then Diane's motion then.
I can shift that over to Pete.
All right. Okay, um, I move to approve the one-day liquor license for the Wyndham Museum on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, from five P M. to eight P M.
Second.
Anything further? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. So passes unanimous, and I think by the sign out in the front lawn, that's a big event for them. The Otterston Fair continues into Saturday, too. All right, then, um, Jim, why don't you, uh, call your, uh, committee into, uh, session?
Okay, I'll call the, uh, Finance Committee to order at, uh, six thirty-five, uh, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and we'll go through a roll call vote, if we will. Uh, uh, Jim Purdy is present.
That show over here is present.
Dear DeParrati is present.
Jeff Calder is present.
Dano Jukanovic is present.
And, yeah, so you'd like to introduce him a bit as our new.
Yes, I, I would, I would like to, yes. Thank you very much, uh, to the Select Board and, uh, Jeff Calder is, uh, uh, joined the, uh, Finance Committee approximately two weeks ago. Uh, he comes to us from twenty-five years with Price Waterhouse. And so we really appreciate Jeff stepping forward. Dano Jukanovic, uh, joined us just yesterday. He, uh, was interviewed by Gary, myself and Roger Smirage about a week ago, uh, and was appointed and was sworn in yesterday. Uh, and Dano is the Chief Financial Officer and the Chief Operating Officer of Arc Point Franchise Group. Both Jeff and Dano bring, uh, their, uh, MBAs with them. So it's a great contribution to the Finance Committee. I appreciate them stepping forward.
Yeah, just a slight correction there, Jim. Uh, twenty-five years with J P Morgan Chase.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was placed. Thank you. I'm sorry.
The competitors, right?
All right, so, uh, tonight, uh, we'll have presentations, uh, big picture overview to start with, looking at our F Y twenty-four budget. So Steve and Jamie, I think, are the, uh, presenters. And over to you, Steve.
Good. Yeah. Share my screen, here's. Can everyone see the first page of the slide?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so this year, um, you know, I think we're good, we're doing a little bit differently. I wasn't around last year, but we're going. I figured it'd be good where we have a few new members on the Finance Committee. We have some, uh, you know, relatively new Select Board members. Uh, I'm new, uh, you know, Jamie's only been here for years, so I figured kind of take a step back and, you know, go over some basics of, of the municipal budget, uh, go over some financial indicators and then benchmark us to our peer communities. So, and after that, I'll do the, I'll do that section, then Jamie's going to jump in with the budget overview, which she'll go over, you know, some budgets, budget to actuals, uh, you know, uh, I do, I identifying this year's budget performance and also, um, go over some of the F Y twenty-four budget as it sits now after our first round of meetings, uh, and requests from the department heads to maintain le- level service. All right, so, really what, what I'm looking to do is so we, maybe I'm going to go over like three, in, in local government, there's three primary revenue sources. Uh, I'm going to go over those. I'm going to go over a couple, uh, expenditure pressure points. And also, when you, even when you're thinking about budget in a municipal sense, that, you know, if for all practical purposes, revenues equal expenditures, you're budgeting to your estimated revenue sources in the future years. Uh, so to do that, I've used something I've used in other communities. It's called the Financial Trends Monitoring, Monitoring System. It was developed by the International City and County Management Association. Um, anyone's interested, they have a book called Evaluating Financial Conditions, a Handbook for Local Government. Uh, and this is, you know, it's designed to give local governments, uh, method and, um, and data points for monitoring their fina- financial condition. Uh, you know, it's not necessarily, it's also a good way just to take a look at, you know, to just, just take a look at the revenue streams, the expenditures, and it's not necessarily painting a bad or good picture. It's just, it's kind of a good lens to look through. And then this last bullet point, I put Massachusetts and everybody else. So we're the only state that uses free cash. So some of these indicators, if looked up in the, in the publication, won't match exactly because they've had to be tailored a little bit to match Massachusetts, um, accounting practices. And a couple of the slides are adjusted for inflation. So what's, what that means for folks who don't know is that we've essentially took, uh, you know, today's dollar amount and adjusted the years backwards so that two thousand and eleven dollars in, in this case are equal to two thousand and twenty dollars. So, you know, past dollars have to be raised up because inflation erodes. You're buying power with each year. All right, so with that, I'm. All right, so with that, I'm gonna, I'll jump into the financial indicators and benchmarking. Like I said before, also we'll start with, with the revenues. As I was saying, we broke it up into really this three primary revenue sources. Those three are the tax levy, state aid, and what I considered local receipts. And the largest contributors to local receipts are permit permitting and licenses, which is like, you know, you take a building permit out, open space, I mean, conservation permit or an excise tax when you're buying, buying a car. The first one, by far and away, the largest is the property tax revenues. So in Massachusetts, this is our property tax levy is governed by Proposition Two and a Half, Proposition Two and a Half is a law that was passed in nineteen eighty-two that restricts the amount of money any community in Massachusetts can raise through their property tax by two and a half percent over what what they were allowed to spend in the prior year, it's not what you spent, it's what you're allowed to spend. And then to account for a growing tax base, they allowed you to raise additional revenue through what's called new growth, so the way I tried to explain that before is if you have an individual who owns a lot with a hole in the ground last year, they paid a tax on that. This year, it has, you know, a three thousand square foot house on it. So the additional tax revenue that's allocated to the house, which was a hole in the ground in the prior year, is what's considered new growth, so it's not added money that's being taxed onto existing dwellings. It's the added money to the tax base that's generated by that growth. So you can see here, this is, this is this is net of debt exclusions and override, so you're looking at just the pure levy limit without anything else going on, and you really see that once adjusted for inflation, a large bulk of these increases is just the new growth, new growth, looking back to two thousand and twelve makes up about one point six million dollars. And these increases in the years in sixteen, seventeen and eighteen, where you see it's relatively flat. Those years had minimal new growth and you can see that generally Proposition Two and a Half without the new growth, keep, keeps trapped plus or minus with inflation. The credit agencies view this as you know, as, as a really good thing because, you know, the tax levy, that's such a large portion of your revenues is, is seen to be very, very stable. And here we are, just benchmarking against our communities. Wyndham's at ninety-two percent of our, all our revenue that comes in is at ninety, ninety-two percent property tax, so you know, that's in the, in the creditors' eyes, we're a triple A rated community. So standard poor sees that as very stable, we're not reliant on like some, some states and communities outside of Massachusetts relying on certain economic incomes or state generated incomes that can tend to be fluctuate, fluctuate wildly depending on what the economy is doing. But with the property tax revenue, revenues generally, you see it to be a stable revenue source. Like we just heard in the, in the.
Yeah. Peter Clay, I have a question, can you go back there?
Yep.
Why is Hamilton actually one percentage point higher?
And?
Than us?
Well, it's probably, well, it'd have to come down to state aid. And I'll get into it in a little bit, but the, it'll be, it'd either be state aid, local receipts. So they may get a little bit less unrestricted governmental state aid than we do for various demographic.
Okay.
Economic factors.
Thank you for that.
It's like we just heard in the classification report, Wyndham's tax base is made up of practically all residential tax base with just under two percent. And F Y twenty-two going to commercial, so as they said, you know, they were asking on that, on the fourth vote that the Select Board took whether they wanted to adopt the residential factor of one or shift the tax burden onto the commercial, onto the commercial tax base, what you see if you were to explore what-if scenarios and started to shift the tax rate onto the commercial, you would see massive, massive increases in the commercials, you know, in the hundreds of percent on their tax bill to have a minimal impact on the residential. And state aid, this is what we were talking about before, this, just to note that because Wyndham is a regional school district, we have removed the Chapter Seventy, which is a school only state aid, it goes directly to the Hamilton Wyndham School District. And you can see here that roughly about two and a half percent you know, bought it, and again, like we mentioned before, bond rating agencies view state revenue as volatile. So seeing a community that has such a low reliance on state aid, again, they, they see that as a positive, you know, the community might not see it as a positive because you know, you have some of the gateway communities like Lynn, Lawrence, Lols, those type of communities where you know, eighty of these numbers would be, you know, wouldn't be two or three percent, that'd be eighty percent of the budget is funded through state aid.
Steve, can I ask a question?
Yep.
On any of those slides, not this one, even the next one, where did these, why are these communities chosen that you're comparing us all to?
Well, it's a mix of budget size, governmental structure, geographic location. So you'll see when, when we have the comp and class presentation next, at the next Select Board meeting on the sixth, they'll go into a little bit more depth, but you know, basically it's just, it took a number of criteria, three or four I just named and ranked and weighted communities based on those criteria and came up with the top twenty communities in the state of Massachusetts that were most similar to Wyndham. And I picked, I kind of cherry picked out of the, out of the top fifteen just based on giving preference towards the ones that were geographically closer to us. Some of them were way, way out, you know, right on the Western Mass, New York border. I just figured that, you know, these were more recognizable to be benchmarked against.
Awesome, thank you.
So again, this is the same chart, same communities, but this is looking at state aid as a percentage of total revenue, not all these communities are regional school districts, so just to make note again that we've, we've removed Chapter Seventy, which is the school only, this is just non-restricted general governmental aid. See here, we're, you know, we're right at the average of our peers. Generally not too many outliers, you got Merrimack and Groveland. It likely has to do with, you know, their demographics of the, of the community. And here's really the third and final primary revenue source. And it's not, not a big percentage by any means, but you know, five or six percent of our of our total revenues and a portion of that is new growth, like we spoke about on the first revenue slide, but the other two are really the, the two primary drivers of local receipts. And those are permitting and permits and licensing and motor vehicle tax. You know, I C M A and G S O, International County Managers Association and Government Financial Officer Association, those are two of like our professional peer associations that we belong to consider building permit fees, motor vehicle excise and new growth as being indicative of economic growth. So if you track these factors and compared with your operating expenditures, which generally increase over time, which is why these aren't these aren't adjusted for inflation, that a flat ratio generally means that the town's economic growth is at least keeping track with, with their, with our expenditures. And again, here, here's the peer benchmarks, excuse me, here's the benchmark again, F Y twenty-two, new growth. So this is again, new housing developments as part of the economic drivers, new you know, tier downs, subdivisions, things, things that are commercial growth. Redevelopments, you can see we're kind of on the lower end of this compared to some of the peer communities, but again, none of, none of our peer communities are experiencing large new growth, we're certainly not anywhere as in the ballpark like Beverly or Burlington or places like that, which are, you know, which are really building, building themselves out. All right, so that wraps up, those are really the three, when you look at a local, a local government budget, that's really, those are really the three, there's not really much more complex than that, those are your three revenue sources that you're looking at, you have some other small parts, small pots of money. But you know, generally, that's about ninety-nine point nine percent of your, of your revenue sources, those three right there. And like I was mentioning before, when, when you're looking at, you know, you have those revenue sources and they're generally restricted to you know, you saw the economic growth is flat and our spending growth is essentially tied to the restrictions of Proposition Two and a Half, which restrict you by about two and a half percent a year, maybe two and three quarters with the growth, you you know, you're not, you're kind of, you have a box that you can't really go outside of and generate additional revenue sources, so when you have expenditures that are growing at a rate faster than your revenue sources allow, you create a structural imbalance in your budget so that these cost factors, these ones that I'm gonna go into here, these two are fixed. And you get the assessment every year and when they're growing, you know, at rates outside of your ability to raise revenue, it's essentially eating at other services or staffing or, you know, supplies that, you know, were bought in prior years, you start to try to find ways to do more with, with less, just because there's, you gotta come up with the same services and, but, you know, and you have a, something that's growing. This is probably averaging, if I remember right, this, this is an average, a growth average of our pension assessment of nine percent a year, going back to two thousand thirteen. And you can see what in two thousand thirteen, it took up three percent of our budget and two thousand twenty-two, it takes up four and a half percent of our budget. So and with that is, you know, and you have a budget that's growing within the constraints of the two and a half percent. Steve?
Yep. That's Jim, do we anticipate any improvement in state aid? And the new budget cycle that's coming up with the surpluses that are being discussed and kicked around?
I haven't heard any, we've been instructed or the, the talk is to just keep, keep assumptions flat.
Okay.
And so just, you know, to add a little bit more color to this slide here, this pension assessment is a, is a fixed cost we get. And this is for, this isn't for our pay-as-you-go pension costs, this is what's called a pension liability. So this is the, essentially the net present value of all future costs related to the pension. So it would be folks that are working today and if the town was to cease to exist, you would have essentially, since you're saying, since it's set up to be, the pension system was always set up to be as a pay-as-you-go, kind of like a revolving door. But essentially you have employees who have worked for twenty years who are paying for employees who are since retired. But the person who has been there for twenty years has a binding pension associated with them, so if the town was to cease to operate that liability, there is, there's a calculation on that liability. And that is what, that's what a pension assessment is in, to full master law requires all communities to be fully funded on that liability by two thousand thirty-nine. We're part of the Essex County Retirement System and we are currently on track to fund it by two thousand thirty-five, so the net point will be fully funded. Our current rate of return, assumed greater return is seven point five percent for the actuarial studies and depending on market performance and life expectancy charts, the actuaries look at a number of factors and every two or three years, Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, they do another actuarial study and those payments can change, you might be doing a little bit better than you thought and then you, your payments will go down a little, which you can see in the, in the past, that has, that has yet to happen yet, but in theory they could. And generally, they really kind of reassess and see what life expectancies are, what assumed greater returns are and what your, what your funding schedule looks like out to that two thousand thirty-five date. You know, another fixed cost that has been far outpacing our revenue growth is for just our property and casualty, you've seen, you know, we've seen significant increases and those are expected to continue into the, into the near future.
Steve?
Yep.
Here's me, it's Diane, F Y twenty-two says an increase of fourteen point zero three percent. But the bar for F Y twenty-three is higher, but only says nine point nine. Ninety-two percent.
Yeah, then those are year over year, so it's four point one percent, F Y twenty is four point one percent greater than F Y nineteen. And F Y twenty-one is seven point three percent greater than F Y twenty. So each year, that, that's the increase in that year, so if you add them all up.
Thank you.
Compounding, but generally you'd get, you'd get the, the rough overall increase.
Wow.
Yeah, so that I just wanted to highlight, you know, when you're balancing a budget on, on some, you know, forecasted revenue sources, when you have imbalances like that and some of your fixed, fixed costs, it can be challenging, so I thought I would highlight those to kind of illustrate the budget process.
Hey Steve?
Yep.
So why is property and casualty insurance going up so high, fast?
Just general, I mean, insurance companies seem to, you know, they always make sure that they're gonna make money, so when claims start to go up and it's really not just Wyndham specific, but claims in general, the cost to cover the claims are going up, more claims are going up, so their actuaries and how much they need to charge for premium, I tell them they need to go up on their premium, so and that's, you know, we really don't have a lot of say in that and we need to ensure, ensure ourselves.
Steve, questions? How often are the policies shopped?
Well, we've go through Maya and to, to be perfectly frank, I'm not sure how often in the past they've shopped policies, generally this is a conglomerate of governmental agencies that participate in this program and they, being Maya, it's kind of the burden is on them to, they're constantly shopping products and trying to provide us with the most advantageous pricing structure and coverage. But I certainly can look into it, but I don't have all the details right now in front of me.
We, we have had success in the health insurance end of that, I don't, who asked that, I'm not sure who asked that question, but in the past, oh, it's Jeff, Jeff, we've had good, good results in some of the reviews for health insurance and shopped around and had reduced our costs in the past.
And we also go through Maya with health insurance as well.
Yeah.
Now, would, would claims in other communities be driving the premium as well, not necessarily claims that are filed here in Wyndham?
Yeah, I believe it, you know, similar to like a pooled healthcare pool. To you, you know, you kind of, you participate in a group of other communities. You know, in theory, you know, kind of, you kind of walk in the line in the middle, you're not swayed too, too much with, you know, if you have a small group and you have one person who is really sick, they get swayed, but then on the flip side, if you have a, you know, healthy group, you're not really benefiting completely mitigating the risk a little bit in the middle. All right, and then I figured I would close with reserves and free cash. So I'm not sure how familiar everybody is with the term free cash, I can assure you it's not free and it's not cash. But so basically, free cash is a revenue source, that's the results of, of a calculation as of July first, which is the start of our, start of our fiscal year, so the first day of a community's remaining unrestricted funds from its previous fiscal years operating. um previous fiscal year's operation. So July one is our day one of our new fiscal year, June thirtieth. Would be the close of the books. So it's a balance on that day. It's not, it's not a running total. It's, it's a certified value of, uh, on that day. Um, and so basically it includes uh the actual receipts, so revenue receipts in excess of what was estimated in the budget process and also unspent amounts uh in the departmental budget line items that were budgeted for uh in the year that just ended. Um, and then the other, the other key point to remember in this, for the next slide is that it's, so you have the excess revenue plus unspent amounts in the departmental budget, plus the, I like to put the starting fund balance, which is the unexpended free cash balance. If you're thinking of a pot, a pot of money, you go under this free cash is, is actually technically considered revenue. So it's go into town meeting, you have a pot of money. And you have the ability to spend out of that pot. So the unexpended free cash portion or started fund balance is what's left in that pot after you spend it at town meeting. And so those three pieces put together uh is essentially going to give you pretty close to your free cash balances. Uh, it's offset by things like property tax receivables and other cer- other deficits, but then in a nutshell, that's really those three components. Uh, the Department of Local Services, who is uh, the, the state of Massachusetts, it's a subset of the Department of Revenue. Uh, recommends that municipalities strive to generate free cash, an amount of three to five percent. Uh, you know, again, generating more is, is not better than generating less. Generally, they feel three to five percent is safe. Is a safe range. It gives you enough to, you know, enough to appropriate a one-time cost. Other communities you'll see will fund their capital programs or other one-time costs through uh free cash appropriations and have a, a strategy or a policy around, you know, they'll they strive to generate between three and five percent. And it's the annual budget through, through uh conservative budgeting pr- uh practices. And then they will fund their capital program in town meeting, leaving about one percent left to fall to the starting fund balance uh and contribute to the, to the next year's uh free cash total. And then here is, there's like I said before, this is, this, this slide is tailored to uh a Massachusetts community. So we generally this slide would say undesigned fund balance, but Massachusetts where we use a combination of free cash reserves and stabilization funds. This one has been doctored a little bit. So we have uh, what, what we've used here to calculate our, you know, quote unquote, reserve funds available is uh free cash net of appropriation. So this is money that the community has left in that pot after town meeting. It's money that is not so-called, you know, relied on year over year uh to fund uh operating one time or not operating costs. Plus the balance of our stabilization fund, which is a more traditional savings account, so to speak. So those two balances combined equal uh what I'm calling our reserve funds. Now, if you're looking at the GFOA, um, they recommend up to two, they recommend a minimum of two months. It's varied, but over the last ten years, they've, they're now up to a minimum of two months for a reserve fund balance, which is about seventeen to twenty percent. But the Collins, uh Edward J. Collins Center uh for Public Management, who is a local advisory through uh UMass Boston is uh recommends that we, we strive to maintain about five to seventeen percent of your annual budget in um in reserves. So you can see here, you know, certainly our trend, you know, we're not in, like what I said, we're not in trouble or anything, but you know, we're getting down to the bottom of the, the recommended range and the, the trend is certainly indicating that you know, we're relying on free cash maybe a little more heavily than we, than we should be drawing our reserves down. Uh, certainly, you know, nothing to panic about at this point, but something that we should be paying attention to going forward. And you know, again, when you're looking at the such a wide range, you know, five to five to twenty percent, it's really community specific, you gotta do what's right for the community. You want to look at internal risks. You know, are you a community that has relies on a large portion of revenue from state aid? And if, you know, the new governor comes in and cuts state aid, you know, what, what's that picture going to look like? And you know, we're, we're not that community. You know, are you a community that's got like a lot of geographic risk with natural disasters? And you're going to need large, large sources of money um that your fingertips. Here we have, you know, masses of, you know, tax base being wiped out by a tornado and those types of things. And you know, we're not really that community. So we're probably on the lower end of, of that spectrum. But just keep that in mind when you're looking at these ranges, that these are ranges that are given out for all communities across the country. And here is um here is stabilization percentage of the total revenue. This is again our benchmark community. So you can kind of see with other, this is just the stabilization fund portion. So this is just the um, the blue. Uh, excuse me, it's the yellow. So you can see how we stack up with, with our peers. You know, when I'm down towards the uh, the lower end of the spectrum. And I believe, yeah, yeah, so this is the final slide I have for you this evening. Uh, this is just to show our debt service. You know, Wyndham has a history of passing debt exclusions, which is actually uh a great thing in the eyes of creditors. Uh, they love to see the uh public support of initiatives around, you know, capital expenditures, building schools and things like that. They should show support. It shows that the tax base is safe. And they, you know, support the government and the financial needs. If, if a problem did come, the likelihood that they would support it uh in that situation as well is high. You can see here that um non-exempt debt, which is um, the orange is uh, they suggest, they being the Departmental uh Local Services, suggest that uh non-exempt debt not exceed ten percent of your operating expenditures. You can see we're nowhere close here, even with our uh exempt debt, which is uh outside of proposition two and a half and our, when I go non-exempt debt, which is up, which, which lives within our levy limit. Uh, at our peak in thirteen was, was only about uh seven percent. So well below that threshold. And you can see that, you know, here with the debt curve that, you know, we have some trailing off and in a perfect world, you would kind of al- try to align your debt with these fall offs. And you know, the curve would look more like a straight line aligning with the um organization's internal debt policy. And that also keeps the taxation, the tax rate uh more uniform and that there's, there's not as many peaks and valleys. And with with that, that's, that's really all I have for you tonight. Again, um, you know, we'll take some questions now or, or at the end, if anybody has anything that'd like to ask, really just, you know, a few things to remember, you know, structural imbalances. Some of those are definitely some of the challenges we deal with in the budget process. Three primary revenues. Uh, something we need to keep an eye on is our uh reserve balances. Um, and now that's all I have.
Any questions from the finance committee or comments from the finance committee? Uh, I have just uh an observation question, Steve. Could you put the uh, the debt exclusion uh reductions up to twenty-eight up? So driving that, if I recall correctly, is we will have paid off the debt for the town hall and police station by twenty-eight. Is that correct? I bu- I believe the we, we're closing in on that.
Yeah, town hall. Town hall is closed, the town hall stuff's closing up, the other big one.
And, and when do we, uh, how far do we have to go in the uh half a million dollar piece of uh fire equipment that we bought two years ago? Is that a ten-year or a twenty-year debt? That was another significant one.
What I have up here is paying it off in two thousand twenty-one for the departmental equipment fire.
We bought the uh half a million dollar Quint in, in twenty-one, I believe. Something like that. But at any rate, I'm just reflecting on that reduced debt and thinking about and consideration of the upcoming um school debts that the two communities will be uh, uh looking at, but it's premature to talk about that at this point. It's good news in some, in some re- uh respects as we reduce the town hall police station expenses.
Yeah, I can forward you our debt schedules. You can take a look.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or?
No, Jamie gonna present a couple of slides here too, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I just had another question. Going back to the pension liability, you'd mentioned that the town will be fully funded. The date in twenty thirty-something, is, is that a static uh uh li- liability or would that continue to grow as there are additional retirements? Or is the town stopped contributing to uh the town employees' pension plans?
You know, I think in theory it would be self-funded at that point with the assumed rate of return, that we wouldn't have a funding schedule. But again, as that change, changes, then you could see yourself needing to fund more. Does that make sense?
So as, as more employees retire, the pension liability will increase? Or is this, it's projecting out uh the retirements of the existing employees?
Yeah, well, it's alright.
Increase.
Yeah, it's perpetuated, it's projecting out the pensions to, without a revolving door scenario of existing employees. So like that, that scenario is always going to exist. I think what the actuary is saying that once we fund this pot of money up to this certain threshold that the, you know, the, the, the rate of return will generate income to the extent that it will maintain our, our funding liability.
Okay, so this, the town is contributing to the pensions of town employees.
Yes.
Yep. Last year, Jeff, I think, I think the number, Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, was about eighty thousand dollars as a pay as you go amount that we put in the budget. Is that right, Jamie?
Well, each, each individual, like every individual in town hall pays uh, at least I don't think we have anybody whose grandfather does, but basically pays nine percent of every dollar they make. And then an additional two percent on every dollar they make. Uh, so for a total of eleven percent, over thirty thousand dollars. That comes right out of your uh, your paycheck. That's not something the town matches that comes out of your paycheck. So all employees now are considering fully funding their own pension liability, but due to the revolving door scenario, um, it, it leaves that gap between now and when if there was no longer anybody making that contribution. Jamie can hop in if you're ready.
Ma'am, thank you. So this is budget to actual. We picked the date of eleven-one because this is when I started working on it, but if you, as you can see, it's roughly thirty-eight percent based off the last couple of years in this year of revenues that we've received and then for expenditures is roughly forty-five percent average. Um, it, for those of you that are thinking we're spending more than we're getting, no, technically our um real estate tax bills are due eleven-one. And if that falls on a weekend, there's, it's the following Monday. And then it's a matter of when it's posted in the office. So I think for, for revenues versus expenditures, we're doing um pretty good. Welcome to the next slide. Does anybody have questions on budget to actuals?
So, let's see.
We just, I went back and did where we were budgeted versus where we are as of eleven-one, twenty-two for twenty-three. So I did the same for twenty-two, for fiscal twenty-two and for fiscal twenty-one, just to get an accurate picture of where we are, where we're headed. And, you know, just to make sure that we're in line of where we've been in previous years.
So this is the, the first quarter, basically, what we're looking at, right?
From July through.
July, August, September. Okay.
Yep.
So uh, on the, on the revenue side, in the first quarter, if I'm reading this right, Jamie, property tax, we have collected forty-seven percent of the property taxes in the first three months. Is that, is that, am I reading that right?
Uh, well, it's a little, yes, it's a little over a quarter because we're included the month of um October. And because taxes are due eleven-one, there could, there's a little, the numbers are a little bit higher. So it's a little bit more than that quarter, but yes.
Forty-seven. And this, and the same with state aid. Is that the same assumption?
Yeah.
What you just explained.
Yep. Usually we get a major, the they, we get it in monthly. So we're
Yep.
At the end of December, it'll probably be roughly fifty percent.
And with that, a- and then the last two or three months, we, we will see a drop off of revenue and, of revenue in those categories in any extent, to any extent. I don't recall that.
What do you mean?
Well, if we're collecting fifty percent of the property or the state, let's use the state aid.
Yep.
If we're collecting half, almost half of the state aid in the first quarter or so. Well, we in the last quarter see a reduction in revenue of state aid in the last quarter.
No, because you're, you're, it's showing as almost fifty percent because we're co- collecting in what we get, usually get it around this time of, of the beginning of the month. So you get it in, it's a monthly factor. So right as of November, this is five months of pay. So by the end of next month, it'll be fifty percent. So we're in line of where we should be.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Finance committee members, any, any observations or questions on this budget to actual in the first quarter of uh fiscal year twenty-three?
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious. Where we see uh differences in the percentages of the budgets that have been spent in fiscal year twenty-three compared to twenty-two. Uh, we think those are, that should be apples to apples. Uh, comparisons, just curious about some of the, the, the swings here. For instance, education through, for three months of this year, forty-one percent of the budget has been spent compared to thirty-two percent the year before. And you know, just looking at uh, you know, where, where the percentages are, are drastically higher or lower uh compared to a year ago, what, what do you think might contribute to that?
It all has to do with the timing of AP and payroll. There could have been a payroll in twenty-one or twenty-two or an AP the last week in August where in twenty, the way the, the first fell, it's just the way the dates fall on the Tuesdays. We do cut AP checks every Tuesday and payroll checks every other week. So when the report, it just, it, it has to do with the date and then when, how many weeks are in that month? Like we cut, if a check has five weeks, there's a five AP checks versus one year that they could be four. So that's where the number fluctuates. So for last year, we could have cut school checks for July, August, September, October and not. But then this year, we probably cut November on the first, which there was an AP actually on the first. So on the first, we cut the check for November where in um FY twenty-two for school, for instance, we probably cut it November. Let's say the first Tuesday was November fifth. So when I ran this report, it just has to do with that date.
You know, any other thing to remember too is that you know, we're project based, so every year is a little bit different. Like you may have going into the new fiscal year, have some things teed up, ready to go. Uh, so you get started earlier in the year and then some years, like with COVID delays, you're, you know, you're been trying all year to spend the money, uh, and you just can't get the goods or services because they're not available right now. So, you know, every year, I think that this shows that we're within reason, we're in line and we're in target. We don't have any troubled areas uh in relation to the timeframe with prior years, but every year is going to fluctuate a little bit.
Also staffing, we've had staffing shortages, so that numbers could be skewed a little bit because of that.
And the general insurance cost, uh, where with expended. And the general insurance cost, uh, where we've expended almost ninety, almost the whole amount of, but that's typically front loaded in terms of the billing process. Yeah.
Yep, it's usually comes in the beginning of the year and then that gets paid off.
Yep, yep. I I just want to make a comment back Steve, uh, what you're mentioning, just for those folks that are listening. Um, under local receipts, uh, excuse me, property tax, uh, we we, uh, the community and the finance committee during COVID would ask uh, Jamie, uh, the town administrator, how are we doing with local local receipts and real estate taxes? And we didn't have any falloff during COVID, uh, which speaks to the stability of our tax base uh, as a real estate tax base. I just think it's important to point that out even during that difficult period of time for a lot of communities and a lot of because we have no commercial tax base essentially, the real estate tax base, however, stayed stable.
Yeah, sure. I believe the numbers, even in the middle of COVID, that we had over ninety nine percent.
That's true.
Potential property taxes paid on time.
Any other questions on the finance committee? Maybe you can go to the next slide, Jamie?
Yep. So FY twenty four budget drivers, um. So when we're talking about education, Steve, can you move to the next? So for Essex Tech, we're assuming no increase in enrollment, but a four percent net operating increase. And again, these are very preliminary numbers. So in the beginning, we're all talking about, we meet with schools, we meet with um, department heads, we meet with each other and we talk about where we are making edu- educated guesses of where the budget increases are coming. So for school, we assumed a four percent net operating increase for the regional schools, we've begun budget meetings, we've met with department heads with school officials and we've had a couple, um, chair only meetings. We're assuming a four percent overall increase, although we met with school earlier today and what they're presenting to their school committee on Thursday, I believe, is a little under four. Um, enrollment numbers, again, were to be finalized in October, which they have been. And I think Steve touched on it earlier in the presentation that the numbers are, they shifted and it's to a benefit to Wyndham. And then there could be, uh, school capital needs that we haven't, um, anticipated or that they're gonna bring forward. Um, health insurance is one of our big budget drivers and in talks with Maya, we're assuming a ten percent increase right now. It's very preliminary numbers. This is what numbers that they're getting from their actuarial. So we will continue conversations with them as the course of the budget season, um, goes forward. And then after the, I asked for obvious reasons, what the increase is coming from, and that's where they're seeing, um, pre pandemic numbers, increasing surgeries, doctors' visits and all that. Um, other fun stuff. Utilities is, I think it will be a big budget driver for FY twenty four. We're seeing national grid increases projected at sixty four percent. So that's something we're keeping an eye on. Those rates did become in effect November of this year. So we're actually keeping an eye on um, national grid and those costs starting now, just to make sure that we're in line with our budget and that. Things aren't getting too crazy for us. FY twenty four budgeted forecast revenue assumptions, budget forecast revenue assumptions. So we're budgeting new growth at two fifty based on newly and recent captured construction projects. And I've got that number in conjunction with our new assessing team. Um, there are no significant changes to local receipts. We do have a reduction from three hundred sixteen, three hundred sixteen thousand, four hundred dollars to zero dollars in free cash. So we want to continue this practice of no usage of free cash to balance our budget. And that is part of DLS's, uh, best practice. Allowance for abatement and exemptions to remain at one ninety five based on our abatement history.
So Jamie, the the reduction in free cash to zero is a goal.
Yes, it's a goal and we want to stay there. And I smile because it's the best thing that we've seen. We want to keep it there. FY twenty four preliminary expenditure forecast. Steve, can you go to the next slide? Thank you. Um, based off of what we've discussed with department heads and what we're seeing where there's an increase in expenses from zero to three. For personnel, it's between two and four. Um, the increase in expenses is, you know, the obvious, there, these are very preliminary numbers, but inflation, there's increased costs of everything. Um, for personnel, we're assuming a two to four percent increase. It varies by department, um, in our because of our collective bargaining unit or non-union, um, base salaries go up two percent COLA and up to two percent merit. Right now, we're in the midst of negotiating between well, with three collective bargaining units, police, fire and library. So as we start seeing those numbers finalized, we'll start but, um, updating the budgets. Um, health insurance, a ten percent increase based on trends and analysis from Maya. And then OPEB is an increase in ten K based on our policies, I believe, less this year we budgeted eighty thousand and for next year it will be ninety. So every year we go up an additional ten K. Again, these aren't final numbers. They are preliminary FY twenty four numbers.
Jamie?
Yes.
So, um, the classification, the compensation and classification study, we haven't, uh, or or halfway, this is a question. Have we rolled in any of those preliminary? Uh, that preliminary data into the personnel expenses yet, or is that premature?
We have not in this premature, which is why I'm stressing that these are very preliminary FY twenty four, because this budget season, there are a lot of moving parts, right? All of our bargaining unit contracts were up and we had to negotiate those, plus the comping class study. So these numbers are fluctuating. This was just a basis to let people know what we're seeing, where we're coming, where the ask are coming from and all that.
Okay.
Then overall FY preliminary budget forecast, right now we're having, um, annual estimated revenues, not including one time funds. That's twenty three million, two hundred twenty one thousand, nine hundred ninety nine dollars. Our projected FY twenty four appropriations are twenty four million, one hundred twenty seven thousand, nine hundred and forty one dollars. And that leaves us with a sort of structural deficit, just to give it a name of nine hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and forty two dollars. Again, these numbers are very preliminary. They're estimates because we have so many moving parts right now. Um, we'll have, this is just to get us, you know, started and working, what we're working towards, but we'll have more clearer picture as the budget season moves on.
Uh, Peter Clay just asking a question.
Yes.
So, um, given where we are in the budget process, is a gap of nine hundred thousand sort of normal?
Yes.
Yes.
It is, because right now we have a lot of numbers that are not sure and we're we're guessing based on trends. Like our our general insurance number is not sure right now, health insurance, and I'm budgeting at forecasting it at ten percent. So there's a lot of unknowns right now. We're still very early in the budget season.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we we and the finance committee hasn't seen the, uh, the numbers yet for FY twenty four appropriations of that twenty four point one million. So as we typically, Peter, as we weigh into this, we'll be looking at that uh, line item by line item, department by department. Historically, the nine hundred thousand, as Jamie said, is pretty much in line. We, at this point in the process, it's so early. Uh, it's it's not not atypical to come up with a with a a a a negative number, if you will. So we have a long way to go with that twenty four point one million dollars.
Yeah, so I just haven't been through a budget process before. So that's why I asked.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, it is, yeah.
And then this final slide just depicts where we budgeted for twenty three and what we're proposed budget for twenty four. Again, just to give you a picture, these are very preliminary numbers. Um, I'm sorry that I'm stressing that, but I just want to be clear because the numbers are gonna be changing. Um. This is where we are with the revenues and the breakdown and then the breakdown of our expenditures. And then again, you'll see the surplus slash deficit of the nine oh five, nine forty two in the bottom. And then that will bring us obviously the expenditures pieces and to our Saturday budget meeting where we'll go into each department and what their asks are and narratives and all the fun stuff.
It's a challenge each year, Peter, uh, as you can, as you can see. And the last two years, we have, fortunately, as we negotiated with the school committee and with their input and cooperation, we have not had an override. Uh, the four percent projected from the schools is a big number for Wyndham. So I'll be very interested in taking a look at that number and the impact on our operation budget. The bigger the school budget is, uh, in terms of their increases, the more it presses on our operational budget and our capital budget for the on the town side. So that's a constant back and forth.
Yep.
Jim, this is Jeff called again. So is the two and a half percent, uh, limitation and what we can raise uh, each year, does that include the school? Because as you point out, if it's if it's four percent for the school and that's the school's fifty three percent or whatever the percentage is of our overall budget.
That that's right, fifty two, fifty four percent.
That's two of the two and a half percent.
That's right. That's right. So the school budget, uh, which for us, the school budget essentially is approximately last year is approximately, this is off the top of my head, about forty two million and change. Our portion of the school budget is approximately one third of that. So let's let's call it eleven and a half, twelve million dollars. Uh, as that goes up, uh, and that is not adjusted, it got adjusted last year twice, actually by the school committee and the school administration. It does press on our operational budget.
Sure, if it's consuming two of the two and a half percent increase that we can, we can raise year over year.
Yep, yep, that's true. It's a constant, it's a constant negotiation back and forth uh, that we, uh, that we encage.
In the last couple of years, we have had really good conversations with the school. We've met a lot. We're trying to really work together. And it's been, it's been good.
We should also remember though, that the last two years, the schools have been very atypical as far as their expenses do the you know, the shutdown periods and so forth.
Yeah, and staffing shortages and all that.
And they had excess and deficiency dollars as a result of that as well, which is essentially their free cash, if you will. So they're able to use some of those monies to reduce the appropriations to the community. Jamie, would it be possible to send the slide deck uh, to the finance committee?
Sure.
That'd be, that'd be very helpful. I think was a good start. And we're meeting with the department heads. Gary on the tenth of December, correct? From about eight thirty to about two o'clock or so, something like that.
Do we say eight o'clock, Jamie?
Uh, Steve, I'm gonna defer to you on that one.
So anyhow, it is Saturday the tenth, so save the date.
Eight, eight, eight thirty.
Eight thirty.
Right, Steve, eight thirty. Really, eight thirty?
Whatever, whatever the majority wants.
Eight o'clock, if you want to get the donuts, right?
Lots of donuts and lots of coffee.
Is that a live meeting, by the way, or is it a Zoom meeting?
I think we, uh,
That what?
I think we're gonna try to do it in person.
Yeah.
Okay, at the town hall?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Right.
Finance, finance, excuse me, Gary, finance committee, any questions on this last slide by Jamie and we're we're just begin to dig into this, but comments or questions?
Yeah, I I would suggest that we not have it at the town hall and that we have it at the library at the high schools. It's a much bigger room. With that many people, I just.
That's a fair point. We could certainly look at a larger venue for sure.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Right, anything else from, uh, either committee? Otherwise, Jim, you want to adjourn yours then?
Yes, do I hear, yeah, do I hear a motion for the finance committee to adjourn, uh, uh, during this portion of the select board meeting?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Scott. Second?
I'll second.
Second, thank you. Who's that? Deidra?
Deidra.
Deidra, okay, thank you, Deidra. All those in favor of adjournment, hi Jim?
Hi, Scott.
Hi, Deidra, and thank you for the presentation to Jamie and Steve.
Yes, good point.
Hi, Jeff.
Hi, Dana.
Okay. Thank you and thank you again, Steve and, uh, Jamie. It's it's a good start and a good overview. It's very helpful. Okay, good evening, all Simcom.
Good evening. All right, so, uh, select board will push on with item D.
Can I just jump in and and thank, um, Steve and Jamie for that presentation? It was, um, again, very educational and helpful. I think for anyone listening and definitely for myself. So thanks.
I second that.
All right, so, uh, Steve, I think you got the lead on this one.
Yep. So I am here to let me bring it up. Uh, so I circulated on Friday, uh, the memo, which uh, essentially summarized the official response to the questions posed to the select board. Yeah, that at the meeting, let me just pull it up here. Give me one second. Yeah, all right. So it, you know, the questions posed by the Longfellow Road Fell Street neighborhood, um, in regards to the Longfellow Road repaving project and the rebuilding of the ravine on October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one. Um, I don't know if the select board had any questions or discussion they would like to have, um, before adopting those responses.
Diane or Peter, any comments on responses?
Nope.
So it's been a long project. I think the, uh, our responses should, uh, fully, um, reply to the questions that we had that during that meeting some time ago. But, um, I must say that Steve and Jamie and the team have put in enormous effort on, uh, satisfying these requests and as the DPW has contributed quite a lot of manpower, uh, to this project as well. So I think, um, Steve, are you gonna bring up the betterments?
Yep.
Figures, right?
Yep, I'll bring that up. All right, to the next page, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share is the Betterman, uh, summary or calculation page. A little better?
A little better.
Try to get, let me try to get a little.
So, yeah. So the exact numbers in are, uh, finalized as best we can get them, but perhaps Steve, he might need a little explanation how the calculations were finalized at.
Yeah, so and so what we did was we we took the original, um, template, so to speak, that was part of the MOU. And so that that workup was And so that workup was done on very preliminary estimates. And but what it did, what it did do is outline a clear percentage allocation to each resident that was involved in the project and that would be assessed a betterment. It also identified that not all residents would pick up all costs. So some residents, depending on where you lived on Longfellow Road, primarily above or below the ravine, dictated what portion of the cost you'd pick up. So if you look at this summary here, the ones in green picked up that allocation of the total project cost, which includes the paving and the ravine stability stabilization. The ones in the blue only picked up costs related with the paving of Longfellow Road. And the percentage here is essentially generated by how many feet on Longfellow, on Longfellow Road you have in front of your house. And so essentially the, and the primary change that we made was the, the town was voted to appropriate $60,000 at town meeting in Article 18. And it was specifically for ravine related costs. So we shifted that credit from essentially below the line, taking up a reduction in the total to adjust, to just reducing the ravine related costs. We can see the 56 to 9007, which is $60,000 minus the town's portion of the project costs. The reason why it doesn't equal 60,000, but if you look at the town's total betterment of 77,250 is because that shift then increased the town's betterment portion by about $3,500. But to ensure that the town was, you know, equally treated equally as, as all the residents. It's bear the, it's going to have to bear the existing cost beyond the $60,000 that was appropriated. And, you know, you can see the breakdown pretty clearly. We went through and reconciled the project to the penny, every invoice, or really let's say we, Jamie did. And then I worked with Rich Souza and Linda Maderos has been a huge help in kind of carving up all these costs into what category they should go in. I know there was some issue around the fence. So we have credited back the total cost of the fence plus the consulting work that was done to justify the safety reasons why it was put in the first place. And also the issues surrounding the water main replacement, which originally thought was to be privately owned by the residents. But then was pointed out later that it was indeed owned by the town. So the town is crediting those costs as well.
Thank you, Steve. And also for the wider audience, do you want to explain the prepayment and the actual final numbers for the betterment and when they'll actually show up on the bill?
Yep, sure. So total project cost was 374,131.64 cents. Early in the, early in the process, there was a preliminary engineering and survey done by Weston Sampson and Kane Land Surveyors. So at this point, although I wasn't around for it, the residents were able to prepay a portion of that, which would be then ultimately applied towards their total benefit, better, betterment at the end of the process. So that if you look right in the middle of the spreadsheet, you have the prepayment. So what that is, is that's, that's essentially crediting on an individual level, the prepayment made towards that preliminary engineering, preliminary engineering and survey study that was completed. So the, the total, the total betterment cost less credits. So the credits would be the, the ones that I specifically, in this case, the credits are not the individual credits, but the credits knocked off the total by more absorb, the costs absorbed, additional costs absorbed by the town to, for the fence and the water main replacement. And the $60,000 that was appropriated at town meeting, which brings the total to 297,056.57. And then those, those totals were then run through the betterment amounts and subtracted any prepayment. And then you get the post-prepayment betterment amount, which is the total, total amount due by each individual. And then we further detailed it in the annual amount based on that total and then further quarterly. It's stated in an annual, so it's quarterly per year for the next 20 years.
And this will start with the, what, one January tax bill?
That's correct.
All right. So a long process on this spreadsheet, but I think we've got it as accurate as possible. And Peter, Diane, questions?
No.
Not for me, Gary.
All right. Then I think, anything else to add, Steve?
Um, no, I got nothing to add other than just thanks.
All right.
I mean, it's been a long project. It's been a long process. And honestly, without, you know, like Jamie and Rich and Linda and everybody helped backfilling the knowledge of two or three years worth of activity. You know, it's been a lot to take in and I, you know, I never could have figured it out without everybody. So I think it's not a perfect end, but I feel like you know, it's pretty good for everybody to move forward.
So we have a motion?
It's a motion to adopt the betterment summary as presented.
Is that written on a separate slide?
Uh, we don't have, I don't believe we have a slide.
All right. All right. I believe we do have a slide.
Oh, it says that? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Back in the other, the year.
All right. So I'll start, do you want to pull that up?
Is that from the package, Steve, or?
Yeah, it was the slideshow. Was there a motion on the slide to belong to a road discussion?
Yes. Just try to make it easy for you, Diane.
There you go.
That's for me. She said, I was like, I have a motion in my head. I forgot it was for me. I'm so sorry, everybody. I moved to approve the finalized betterments for the Longfellow Road project as presented on November 15, 2022.
I second. Any further comments, questions? Otherwise, roll call, vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you to staff and to Linda for bringing this, drawing it to a close soon. All right. Finished new business. So one more opera survey discussion. Steve, do you have some rough numbers on? How many?
Looks like we're at about 172 now after the, the final social media push or information push. So but an extra 50 ish people took it. 55% still left from, from two weeks ago. I guess we're just looking to see if, if that's satisfactory with the board and they would like to officially close the survey. And then we can work to regenerate some reports from the data for our consumption. And, you know, I was also going to suggest that the board was inclined to maybe take it after we distribute the materials and you have time to consume them and digest them. You know, any, any questions, obviously we can answer, but then maybe take the survey, just the three members of the select board. Now that you've had time to wait and digest the public's input to, to the extent that, you know, maybe you know, you, you will rate things a little bit higher or lower based on our feedback.
So what do you think, Peter? Diane?
I think I'm happy that we went from 100 to 175. And based on everything that Steve and I think you know, I know I reached out to my network as much as possible. I'm sure everybody else did. I think we should close it and then let's see what it says.
Would you want to take it one more time after?
Well, that's Diane.
So I, I agree with Pete. It's nice. We got an extra 50 or so people. I say we close it, we get as much data as we can. I just like to caution us all. Remember that was ideally, it was 175 people out of a population of 3,500. So we just want to make sure we keep everything in perspective.
Yes. So let's give people a day or two notice. So what? Close it out tomorrow or Thursday?
Yeah, if you don't want, it's fine. It's easier clicking a button.
All right. Thursday, okay? Peter, Diane?
I'm good.
All right. So let's close out the ARPA survey as of closer business Thursday, and then we can get down to the analysis work. All right. Therefore, schedule coming up. So we have the quintuple board meeting with the Hamilton School Committee on November 30th, that the, at the Bucker Cafeteria, I believe. Select board meeting on December 6th. We have the finance Saturday grand meeting on the 10th and the last select board meeting of the calendar year on the 20th. Are we missing anything there?
I don't think so.
All right. Catherine, do you have everything? Okay?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Thank Catherine. Anything else, Steve?
No, that's all I have for you this evening.
All right. So long meeting. Say thank you to Joe for doing the slideshow, getting trained up and everything. And ready for a motion there, Peter? You muted.
I'm really good at that. With nothing left to discuss, I moved, we adjourned in November 15th. Select board meeting at 7:54 PM.
Second.
Anything else? Otherwise, roll call, vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. All right. So one last thank you to everybody. The staff's been working really hard on the numbers in these projects. So we're making good amount of deals completed here shortly. All right. Sounds good. Good night, everybody.